I have a real estate tax. I think, as I have discussed with some, that there are areas to cut. So, I'm just forward that we would even bother having this discussion. And I appreciate hearing the point of view from other people. But, Ed, explain to me why cuts cannot be made further?
Because since I've been up here, I've made cuts in certain departments. I have cut within the office. And that wasn't, you know, that came at me from different ways of how it came to be for me to do certain cuts in an office. I've dealt with that. The road department is underneath union negotiations, and I'm adjusting just personnel. I can't cut within that, nor am I giving the opinion that I would. And then the police department, you know, I was informed by the previous solicitor that, I mean, there's a special circumstance I feel like maybe we can address within that department, but I don't have the legal counsel to do. And it wouldn't be enough to solve the problem either. I would only, I'd only come back with to you with a three-quarter of a mill tax or a half a mill tax. What I can do is make sure that I use my vote as oversight in this. The other problem is, is that we would only be in this problem next year, and we are in the problem next year. If you ask me, the 1.25 just gets it pretty much through this year. As far as raises that go through next year, how negotiations turn out for certain departments that will have an impact for next year, we'll be right back to this point of taxation. So, all I can do is do my best to vote how we spend the money. And hopefully, I can, I can pull back in areas and we have a surplus, and maybe that can help apply for next year, because we are coming back, in my opinion, to tax again next year. It just wasn't enough tax to get us through what we're going to probably experience for next year.
Okay. So, throughout the year, wasn't that your duty, your due diligence, to stay within the budget? And then, if something started to skyrocket, was there a discussion as to, well, where did the skyrocket?
As far as this past year, we actually had a surplus, right, honey? There was a surplus as far as for 2015? Did we have a surplus for that year? I thought you said we had a...
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
How's that, fourteen thousand?
And a half or something.
Okay. I wasn't sure if the earning income came in or any more for January or...
So, I asked Mr. Pomorski, I asked Mr., I asked you all that were on the board throughout this time, where did the red start coming in? And what did you do during that time?
I did as much as I can throughout the years. I mean, I, the medical plan, I researched that, we were able to get that out. There's been a couple, you know, there was a mistake, you know, as far as reporting in the insurance that came back to bite the township a little bit. I think as far as the board, I mean, as far as how we've gone through the year, I think we have navigated the best of our ability. My, we're not all responsible for all the previous years. I mean, we walk up here, just like Carol has done tonight, you know, certain, certain areas of the budget have gotten to a certain level of that, you know, whether you want to do something about it or you don't. It's very hard to do anything, because there's contracts in place and things set in motion that I can't reverse at this time. There's nothing I can do about, you know, contracts that are set out for four years or potential contracts that we might see from this year. There's nothing I can do. There's been decisions by, by, you know, arbitrators in that matter that I really, I can't address. And I'm not putting out my opinion that I would. I'm just saying, I have zero oversight. But one thing I can do, I mean, there is some areas that I see going forward that I'll make sure that I have complete oversight as far as my vote, to make sure that we can possibly pull back some money. Just because there's money in the budget for a particular thing doesn't mean I'll vote for it. Maybe we can come up with a different plan and hold back that money, because we are going to need additional money next year. So, maybe, maybe we can make it pass through this year with the 1.25, and next year, we can hold that 1.25 without coming back for a two or a 2.5. So, that's the best. I can't solve the budget problem by reopening up. I will tax you, not by my own, that I want to, but I'm going to, I'm going to end up coming back to you with a half a mill tax.
Okay.
And I won't do that.
I appreciate your information. And I would like, included in the minutes, to reflect that this township and our entire coastal area school district, at the hands of Alan Novak, the czar of Chester County corruption, has transferred his road crew from South Coatesville to East Fowlfield, and then had, then set up this union gig, so, which would also create havoc for us. So, I would, therefore, I do want it in the minutes, because it is costing us dearly. He is the same attorney who is costing us dearly in the school district. So, I would want his name and our records to be flagged back.
Thank you, Gavel, please move on.
Sir, Ed, I have a question for you directly. To clarify what you had said and not reiterate anything you had said, what I'm gathering from what you had just put out there was that you do not support any personnel cuts, and you do see that there's no logic where you can apply no tax and solve the budget balance. So, you agree that there has to be some kind of real estate tax in order for the township to function next year, correct?
For this year, there needs to be a, for this year that we're in, for 2016, yeah. There, I mean, there's, I'm not able to cut enough to balance the budget if it was reopened within the time that we have. I don't even know if I would get enough agreements for different areas. As far as personnel, do I think, do I think that there's ways to, to say that we're like a utopia, like everything's just perfect here, and that we don't have ways that we can solve things in personnel? I don't believe that. I mean, there's always ways to improve. I mean, so I, you know, I don't necessarily agree with that. But, I mean, I can't, I cannot solve the tax issue without myself voting for something to implement. So, with the 1.25, if the board is prudent over the budget, if we watch different areas and try to control spending, we might not have to come back next year with an increase in taxes, which, if you ask me, we can easily do to the township, because we just didn't pass a large, a large amount of tax wasn't passed by no fault of any supervisor up here, whether, how you voted. It just, it's not enough to get us through, it'll get us through this year, but it will not be able to handle next year. So, maybe by just oversight, we can control the tax coming back again at you.
Right. With all due respect here, what I'm hearing you say now is that you agree with that 1.25 being the bottom line to get by, and there's no further cuts you could make without having the tax that you agree with, but you voted against it during that budget meeting. Like, you weren't for it then, but now you're saying that's the only way to get by. It's kind of confusing.
No, it's not. In certain ways, I can understand that. It's because I'm up, we were up against the law. I mean, it's not that, I haven't been sounding the alarm for a while around here. Every year, I've been talking about different areas that are increasing ten, 10 to 12% per year. And there's been, you know, I'm not faulting any supervisor. Everyone has their own right to vote the way they are, and they have their own vision for East Fowlfield. And, you know, areas have increased throughout the years, and, you know, it could have been controlled. There could have been ways to possibly pull back, in my opinion. No fault to any supervisor up here. So, I have given as much oversight up as I can from sitting here. Maybe I could do a better job, maybe there's a lot more I can do. I agree, there's always room for improvement. But, from what I saw, or what I had seen to where we could have controlled some costs, maybe to not get to this level of, of the shortfall, maybe that could have happened. And it could happen as easily as just possibly putting the, you know, the solicitors' issues at the beginning of the meeting. If you were to call a plumber to your house, you wouldn't say, hey, I'm going to go mow the lawn for two hours and I'll come back in. He's going to sit down on his couch and he's going to bill you for those two hours. So, maybe areas where we have people that are expensive, we deal with them right in the beginning, so we don't rack up eight hundred, twelve thousand dollar bills. There's areas that we can improve. I think, you know, no fault to any supervisor up here, but I think we all agree, there's ways that we can possibly improve. I wasn't a, I wasn't supporting that tax. No, I wasn't supporting it. I know I can't solve it at this time. There's only 45 days to solve a huge issue that has come about.
And you're saying you see no way in those 45 days that you're going to change that without having a tax, period?
I would have a tax at some point.
So, in that case, you're now supporting the tax because logic dictated that there was none other way?
No, I'm not supporting the tax. I'm just not, I'm not voting to reopen it, because I feel like I won't be able to solve enough. May, maybe, I mean, maybe if I keep going through and slashing, I can possibly balance the budget, but the township still has increases coming for next year. So, at some point, if, you know, possibly Joe and Steve continue, you know, and no fault to them, if they want a tax for next year, one of us is going to have to give in, because there's a shortfall in the budget, you know, if we all have promised that, no tax. But, I will say this, there is areas that this township has spent a lot of money compared to other municipalities. I mean, there is areas that we could have saved, we could have possibly looked into, used equipment versus new equipment. There's a lot of municipalities. When you look at Unionville, it's not like what it looks like here. You know, there's, you know, these, and that township has money, you know, compared to here. I always look at East Fowlfield as a municipality. I really can't afford it, but they have the Mercedes out in front of their yard. And it's a serious problem here in East Fowlfield about how we spend money. We really need to look at ways we can possibly save, save some money. And some things is, we can buy some used stuff. Like, we need Fire King saves the file drawer cabinets in there. Of course, they're like probably 14 or 15 hundred dollars new. Why not look on Craigslist, have someone look on Craigslist for something, possibly pick them up, or look at some places that sell it used for two or $300? We don't always have to have brand new stuff, you know, we don't, for stuff like that, you know, for stuff like that. So, there's ways that I can improve to, to help save money in my votes, and that's all I can do at this time. I can't go back in the past and straighten out spending. I tried.
The prior discourse that you guys had come to that decision, I hadn't heard any of your personal input, where I heard Mr. Toth's input, and I heard Steve and Joe's input on what they proposed as alternatives. And you and Mr. Kilgore didn't really have your own kind of platform, it was kind of Mr. Toth's and them. And you gave us kind of an A and B. And you guys compromised, and that was, you know, proposed, and then eventually compromised further down, and that's understandable. But, at this point, you're saying, for the way you see it, the one and a quarter tax for the 2016 tax year is the only way to realistically budget, and maybe you don't have to spend it all, but you need to have it up front. You need to have that in place. You're not trying to take it away. You're giving her courtesy because she wasn't here.
Yeah, I've made the motion only on the floor. I mean, it's something that's been voted through. I mean, there's things that I voted through that I wish I could go back and change. I mean, but it's been voted through. I'm not trying to put myself on the floor that now I'm in support of that tax. I'm not. I just realized there's nothing I can do to solve the problem, and that's what I'm trying to say here. I couldn't solve the problem enough to eliminate the tax. But, I feel as we go forward, the more we look at things and ways to save, maybe we don't have to become a high-tax municipality, which I perceive us becoming. We have serious things coming down the line with, with the EPA, the DEP, with stormwater management. I would like to put, you know, if I can get a board agreement, I would like the people decide on how, at what level they want their fire department services by putting a fire tax on the ballot, and letting the people decide whether or not, what, how much they want to spend in that area. If they vote in favor of the tax or the fire tax that other municipalities have, then so be it. The people have spoken. I would love to be able to put that with the people. So, maybe that's something this board can do, versus the board listening to certain pitches from certain people, and, I mean, we're always going to have different people in the audience saying things. Why not let the masses vote on that tax? If they want more fire department services, let them vote on that tax like other municipalities have. So, there's ways I can put it out to the people, and that way, I can gauge it as a supervisor, because quite frankly, this is one of these last few meetings is the largest that I've seen in a while. It's usually two people out there. So, you don't really get a good pulse on the municipality, and that's where I'm at. I mean, I can't make any promises up here, if that's what you're asking, but my one promise is that I will do what I continue to do, and just flip over the budget if I can save money, or different ways, and try to keep it from coming back to bite you, bite the township again next year, because it's headed that way. It really is. It's unfortunate, but there's, there's costs coming to this township, and it has to be looked at. And at some point, even the ones that in the audience that are supportive of this tax, at some point, your wallet or your purse is going to say, I'm not, I was okay at 1.25, I'm okay at two, I'm okay at three, five, we're getting a little out there. And it can easily keep escalating that, because things just keep on increasing. You have to, you have to look at other townships and look at what they're doing, look what they've spent, look at what their departments have as their budget, and you have to compare. That's all I can do. I can't seriously look at any department to say, hey, this is what I do. I do pull the contracts from other municipalities and departments and compare those. So, what else can I do but that to gauge where we're at? And I do my best, you know, whether you agree with me or not, that's what I do. And I gave back my pay last year to help the township. I gave back my $2,500, and I told the municipality that I would never seek that reimbursement. When, my first year in office, when there was a mistake made with the Pennsylvania State meeting for peace acts, the ticket was $350, it was a complete mix-up in the office. I issued my own check back before this board of supervisors to the office, so I didn't feel like I was underneath anyone's thumb in that I didn't waste your money. I've done everything I can. I never got business cards for myself. That's like $60 to $70 or something like that. I've done the best I can to control my own internal spending for this township. I didn't get any of the turkeys, none of that stuff. I've done whatever I can to be a fair resident up here, because after I'm off this board, you know, I would like somebody else to sit in a seat and do the same. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay. And thank you for your point. Thank you.
I just want to say, we did, I did bring up the last, I, I, hopefully, you get a hold of your state senators, any gentlemen's your state senator, your House of Representatives, Mr. Lewis, get a hold of them in reference to the push for a fire tax. And that's what I brought up in one meeting itself for anyone. This department, departments did get an increase, which I'm glad the board did get that. But that's one department that never did get an increase in a couple of years. Same with the Coastal Library and some other agency that just had a stalemate. The only thing I would suggest for the board, and I'm not going to pinpoint any, but when they get a hold of, I just know, I got a mail in the other day from Modena, and how many of your residents put in $40 or $50? I'd like to see the feedback, because I did ask Modena. They put a lot of mailings out for each one of yous, and you got in the mail. I know I put one in, because they come to my house. And same with the fire companies. Modena comes first call here, Westwood be second call on this side of the township. They bonfire up the Weavers. We all know Weavers burnt down. All kind of fire companies there. So, I do appreciate what you gave the fire companies, but they are one organization that deals strictly on volunteers. But at the same time, I would want those departments to look at their budgets and go back over there, and not pinpoint that there's been some funds are misplaced in those departments. And hopefully, they will keep a track of their budget, just like I hope you gentlemen and ladies keep a track of East Fowlfield budget. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
One last question, in reference to the fire tax. Is it a flat rate tax, or is it based on real estate? And then I would also state, I thought I seen in the budget where Modena was increased 20,000, 50,000, up to 70,000, something that I read. Is that correct?
They get a 71, they went from 71 to 100,000, which is split between Modena and Westwood.
Oh. Okay, so, in thirds?
Between Modena and Westwood.
Oh, in half?
No, 60, 40.
Well, yeah, it's 60, 70, 40.
60, 40.
60 for Modena, 40 for Westwood.
60,000 for one.
60 percent.
40 percent, well, which would be 60,000 in this case, but yes.
From 100,000?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, that's, and again, is the fire tax a flat rate, or is it a real estate tax?
You could, you could do it, you would probably, to get it on the ballot as a referendum, you'd probably do it either way.
Yeah.
It depends on who would spearhead that. I was looking on the second-class township website for supervisors, and I see a lot of municipalities, as far as boards, really wanting to put that before the people. That way, the question's asked. There's a lot going on, even in Chester County news, of fire departments with boards, and I feel it's just the easiest thing for this board to handle, is just to put it before the people. If the people want a fire tax, if the people want more services in that area, then let them speak, because, quite frankly, I don't feel like I, I can gauge it enough myself. I'd rather have that question before the people, and if the people come back yes, then of course, we can increase to that level. If the people say no, and they're satisfied with the level of services that they're at, then so be it. As far as those fire departments, the people have spoken. And that's the easiest thing that I think any board can do to possibly be fair about that question, because otherwise, I don't know how to answer it. I don't know, I'm not in the internals of the fire department. I did ask for the payroll, and I haven't received that yet, but I'm not in the internals of the fire department, so I don't really know, it's not my purpose or my place to say how they're spending money. I wouldn't know what a good purchase on a fire truck is versus not, so.
Well, when they come to the board, all those documents should be given to you, and I would say that, I was told that a certain fire company, doors were shut, the fire company trucks were put outside of the doors by authorities. So, well, of course, you're not told that. So, that makes me question, what kind of operations are they running there? Why would the, well, I was told it was the federal authorities? Put the trucks out in the parking lot, so that they would be available to the people, and shut the doors.
Mrs. Ward, call for the votes, please.
Yeah, I don't know what to answer that question.
Well, I don't know either, but...
Ask your source.
Yeah, I'm missing one. Call for the votes. So, I would like to make the motion to rescind the motion that I've made before the board. Second. Any questions out there in the audience? It's a different motion.
Should we rescind it?
Yeah. Want you to rescind it?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The monthly meeting dates and times?
So, we started just seeing how it was a four-month, it's a four-month, Carol voted for it.
Voted against, rescinded.
Voted against, rescinded.
Yeah.
You know what you voted, yeah, you voted to rescind.
You rescinded the motion.
Actually, you don't have to rescind, we don't have to vote. When we rescind, you can just rescind that thing, so.
I was just asking the board.
Monthly meeting dates and times. I make the motion to approve the board of supervisors' meetings at 6:30 PM on the fourth Tuesday, and their workshop the second Tuesday. The parking rec commission meetings at 6:30 PM on the first Tuesday, and their workshop on the third Tuesday. Planning commission meetings at 6:30 PM, the first Monday, and their workshop on the third Monday. Historical commission meetings at 6:30 PM on the first Wednesday, and their workshop on the third Wednesday. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. 2016 trash recycling payment information sheet, assuming this is in the back, correct? For everybody, or?
No, but I can make copies. It'll be sent with the bill.
It's on the website.
It'll be sent with the bill.
And it's going to be sent with the bill, okay.
When's the contract on the trash up?
It's up, it's up at the end of, is it up at the end of this year?
I think it's 17.
Man, I just want to hear. All right, it's, so it's a...
End of 2017.
End of 2017.
That's the third day's budget, so that's where I see it.
Appointment of the public works department. I make a motion to appoint the following public works employees as presented in the meeting, or the agenda. Second. Comments or questions? Two. Mr. Page, I think it's the same as what it was.
Yeah.
I don't know.
There's no increase, it's the same as 2014.
Right. We finalize with the team.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'm voting aye would comment, just, it's dependent upon the outcome of the labor negotiations, just in case anything changes based upon my aye with that number. So, aye would comment.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. As-needed snowplows. I make a motion to appoint the following as-needed snowplows as presented in the agenda minutes, all at $15 an hour. Second. Comments or questions? Ms. Rhodes?
How many do we have? When you say, when you have...
Eight.
You have eight, basically part-time people that need, of course, snow.
Correct.
And that was it?
$15 an hour.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. I make a motion to appoint the following emergency service employees as presented. Fire marshal, assistant emergency management coordinator Jim Reagan, assistant fire marshal and emergency management coordinator Anthony Serna, both at $163.92 per quarter, and $22 an hour. Second. Questions or comments?
I'm just curious what these gentlemen do for the township, because I've never seen any reports, anything sort of like as a past hardship. I'm just curious, like what services do they really provide? We need investigations on post-incidents, we get the county, and just, and maybe you guys could tell me, but I'm just curious what they provide for that, for that pay.
Do you want to add a question?
We were asked for verification of what we do several months ago, and that was supplied to the board. Joe, the county does not respond to all incidents, as you know. The county also is not available all the time, so we have to cover for them. The other part of it's emergency services, which the county does not provide any local emergency management positions for the township.
And it's required position by federal law.
I understand that, but I don't see any monthly reports here, and that's why I'm just, a lot of times, you guys aren't here, and that's only the question I'm asking, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, is, can I ask a question? So, Joe, I've seen this go back and forth, you know, between these gentlemen and the fire departments. As far as money being spent, is this something that you can solve internally? Like, could one, you put one, like a member here of East Fowlfield as an emergency service person? Like, could you be that as assistant chief? I'm, question, I don't know.
I have credentials to do it, but no, I don't want to do it. I have enough in my department of place of employment, but I don't, I don't, I can't do that, but...
Okay. I'm trying to just see if there's a way to, I know the fire departments have spoken up about these two gentlemen, and I'm trying to see if it can be solved within the fire departments, if there's a resident here within the fire department that would like to be on that position, and then, I mean, if there's money that can be saved here, I mean, I'm just trying to, I've seen the office, I don't want to use that strong word, but the questioning for the fire departments with these two gentlemen. I'm trying to figure out, based upon the information that's being put out there, what's the issue with them? Do you have somebody that, do you have a solution to the, to what we have? Do you have a solution as far as the money being spent, or a solution?
Not the solution, it's more that I understand that we're required to have an emergency coordinator, and that's a, that's the service these gentlemen are providing.
Okay.
I don't see a lot of feedback from what they're providing. I mean, they're going to meetings, they're going to trainings, we're providing them a little vehicle to do so, and they're just, I'm here at the meetings, and I don't see anything coming back, that's all. I'm speaking as a resident more than a fire company representative.
Okay. But, Joe, you realize that the fire departments have spoken up in this, I mean, I know Mr. Sly's not here, but, I mean, he could just speak up within the minutes about this, questioning the same thing. So I'm just trying to understand the internals of the fire department, what, if there's a solution other than the money being spent, is it something that could be handled internally? If you can't, then I understand, it's just my general question because I don't know. So I'm just trying to ask the question on that, that's all. Go ahead, do you want to answer?
Go ahead. Well, the answer as far as the emergency management side, one, we review the various plans that are required for review and update them such as the Brook Crossing Dam, the emergency management plan for the township. We have been involved with county as far as the hazard mitigation plan, which is a requirement that we're gonna have to address in a future meeting.
Okay.
We address plans, well, we've had plans reviewed as far as hydrant locations, as far as location of driveways, width of roads, things of that nature. We attend the quarterly meetings that are required by the county and state and FEMA, the federal government. So as far as if you would like more reports, if that'll satisfy, if that's his concern, sure, we'll give you more reports. But we have been here on numerous occasions over the last year.